This conference will now be recorded.
Can't see who it is, so if you're on the phone, just say something so we know who you are.
Chair Jacobson, this is Wayne. I've been having some technical difficulties, which is why I'm keeping my camera off. I'm also on the phone, so if something goes wonky with the computer connection, I can move to the phone very quickly. So I'm one of those phone calls.
Okay, and I think we are recording now. So it's 6:01 PM, and I will go ahead and call the joint work session with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and the city of Lincoln City to order, and we'll do some introductions and establish that we have a quorum. We do have Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Hunt here, so we do have a quorum for the Board of Commissioners, and I will turn it over to Mayor Anderson. This meeting to order, and take it to me. And if you could mute your phone, that would be helpful if you're not talking.
To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash. This conference will now be recorded.
All right, Commissioner Jacobson Anderson here, and the entire City Council of Lincoln City is here as well.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think if you just joined us like a minute ago, I think you have audio on both your computer and on your phone, and it's creating some feedback. So just FYI to whoever that is that first joined us. So this meeting was, and our agenda, I think, was put together by mostly the City Council, kind of choosing from a list of topics and making some other suggestions. And the first one up on that was broadband, and I'm not sure what exactly the question-
Chair Jacobson, Chair Jacobson, yeah, this is Doug. I added that because I know that's been a topic of interest to many of us, both on the Lincoln City Council and at the Board of Commissioners. And so I thought it would be a good topic to start out with, and I asked Rachel if she could participate and give us an update on really a wide variety of activities that are going on relative to broadband in rural areas to support education. And I felt that, again, it would be a good topic to start out with, so I had it added at kind of the last minute. So if it's new to a lot of people, I'm the person that did the damage. So with that, unless there are other introductory comments, I'd say let's turn it over to Rachel.
Let's do that. Rachel, maybe introduce yourself, and then you can talk about broadband.
Yes, it's nice to be here with you guys today, Mayor and councilors. Thank you so much for your time, and commissioners as well. I know some of you from my previous job, working as the deputy director at the Council of Governments for the region. So I may be a little bit familiar. I'm not wearing a suit today, though, sorry. So the county brought me on to help with their Building Back Better process, essentially to help find resources, some for response, but mainly for recovery of our communities post-COVID. And that ranges from everything from broadband, telecommunications, health, education. We're looking at various different projects. But one of the biggest pieces that came up as we were looking at how do we build back better is the issue of rural broadband. And while some people have access to broadband, not everyone does. And we know that not having that access and not having affordable access really has a detrimental impact on people's health, education, and ability to work. And so with the CARES funding, there has been money flying everywhere, as I think everyone here is well aware. And one of the opportunities that came up was with the Economic Development Administration and their CARES funding. And so we thought, well, what can we do with this? And after some talking with different communities around the state that have actually put broadband in place to the last mile, which means to the households, we understood that we needed to do a feasibility study. So to make sure that we were getting voices from all parts of the county, we formed the Broadband Action Team, or the BAT, as it's called. And that is not now just Lincoln County, but includes Lincoln, Benton, Lynn, and Lane. Because we, while we're all very different in a lot of ways, we all struggle with rural broadband. And some of these funders prefer to have a more regional view on the applications. So right now, we're in the process of putting together the application for EDA. It's a first-come, first-served basis, and that will be to get our feasibility study done, which is the first step. From that feasibility study, we'll get a market analysis that will be helpful for your internet service providers to understand, is it worth my while to go into these neighborhoods? How many people do I need? As well as an engineering plan and map. Where else do we need to put broadband, and what is the technology we're going to do, put to use? So you can do fiber, you can do Wi-Fi where it's geographically possible. So this EDA funding is just the first step. There is a lot of other funding that will become available. So we will go after the regular round of EDA funding in the fall, hopefully for actual infrastructure build-out. USDA has money, as well as the FCC. The Broadband Action Team is only going to be as effective as the people who are at the table. And so I would encourage any of you who haven't joined to reach out to me, to be invited. Those meetings happen every other Thursday from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. We have a pretty broad representation there. We have local elected officials, councilors. We have stakeholders from the education, the school district, from the health folks. It's a pretty broad spectrum, and the councils of governments, as well as the Economic Development District. So we're working really closely with Cascade West Economic Development District. Some of you may know Mike Corwin has been working with them for some time. So the goal, the long-term goal, is to make sure that there is last-mile broadband in Lincoln County and beyond. And there's going to be a lot of steps in between, but I feel fairly confident with the group of folks we have at the table that we will get there sooner rather than later. Thank you. Any questions?
Maybe I'll just kind of go through the list of councilors in case anyone has any questions, otherwise they can get a little crazy here. So Mayor Anderson, any questions from you around broadband?
No, that was very helpful. It has come up as a huge topic and especially showed its, our weakness with the remote school issue, learning. So I'm happy to see it being attacked.
Diana Hinton, questions from you?
Diana.
I don't have any questions. I'm just really glad to hear that this effort is underway and wish everyone the best of luck. I hope it's successful.
Okay, Judy, questions from you?
Well, I know Lincoln City has implemented a few hotspots for students around the town. I was wondering if the county had any plans to initiate hotspots in some of your areas?
I can speak a little bit to that. So we submitted as a county an application to the FCC to expand things that support telehealth, but it supports beyond telehealth. And included in that were more Wi-Fi access spots at all the county buildings. And so while we haven't heard back from the FCC yet, we are actually putting in another application to Business Oregon, because they've gotten some broadband funding to fund those Wi-Fi access points to help with. But yes, that is a short-term option for helping to get people access.
Great, thank you.
Diane, questions?
No, I don't have audio, so I'm on my phone. That's where I went black. But no questions, thanks.
Okay, Mitch?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, Rick, questions?
Thanks for the report. I guess I was wondering if this is all managed through the county and the county channels the funds? Does this go into, and if there's a need in a certain municipality, I'm thinking especially like Salletts and Tulare and other lay places, does this cross borders into the cities as well?
Commissioner Jacobson, do you want me to take that?
Yes, please. Thank you, Rachel.
So the feasibility study will cover the whole county. So it will cover all the smaller municipalities, because we know that's part of where there are the struggles, right? The small pockets of communities. So that will absolutely cover their interests as well. And in terms of who's managing this, you know, I imagine it will depend on some of the funding sources. So for some funding sources, they'll want the county, each county individually to manage it. And then we'll just see what the broadband engineering plan looks like in terms of build-out. And the plan is to get the feasibility study complete and then come back together as a BAT and review those feasibility studies and make some recommendations to our elected officials for formally adopting a strategy around broadband. And there may be things, for example, where Florence, even though it's part of Lane County, is much more connected to the rest of the coast. And so there might be projects that span county borders, span municipalities as well.
That's Rachel. All right, I think we got through everyone's questions on broadband. So we will move into a COVID-19 update. And Rebecca Austin, who's our HHS Director and our Incident Commander for COVID-19, will be providing that update.
Thank you, everyone. I actually have to go. I apologize. But my email is in the chat box if you need to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be with you. So yeah, I tried to organize this a little bit, because you know, really, I could talk about COVID-19 pretty much all night. And I know you don't want that, so I tried to tighten it up. And I'm going to give you my three Cs: the counts, the concerns, and the community. So on the counts, we have now 324 positive cases, and we have had two deaths so far. So unfortunate. And I think it's important to note here that on June 1st, we had 16 cases. And on June 30th, we had 312 cases. That has been a very heavy lift for all of us, really. I'm sure you're feeling the burden just as much as I am. And then I just want to put that in perspective. We have 8,931 positive cases in Oregon, the whole state, and 208 deaths. And today, there was almost 300 new cases in the state. So hopefully, some of you caught the governor's press conference today, where she did address our spiraling out-of-control cases and the increase in the positivity rate. So I just want to clarify that there's two different things that we look at. One is, of course, the number of cases that keeps growing every day, and then the percentage of the positive cases from the total tests that we took, which is called the positivity rate. So we wanted to test more people, but we didn't really want that positivity rate to, we wanted it to stay pretty stable. But what we're seeing really is the positivity rate is going up and up. So the more people we test, a lot more people are becoming positive. So that is, kind of leads me into my second C of concerns. But before I go there, I just want to just say about the governor's press conference today that not only did she stress the concern of our spiraling cases and our increasing positivity rate, but she really kind of knuckled down on the face covering requirement and sort of explained that and answered a lot of questions from the media about that. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to really commend the City, the Lincoln City Council for sort of being out front on that issue for us. And you were one of the first to really begin to wrestle with that issue and to be out in your public meeting about discussing what you wanted to do about that. And I really, I just want to say I really appreciate that. It was really good for public health to see that effort on your part. And I heard that you put signs up at both of your entrances, asking people to wear signs. Hopefully, you've changed that now to say that that's required. But I just wanted to make note of that, because this is a big push now across the state for everybody to wear face coverings. So my second C is my concerns, and I just want to share those with you, because I think it gives you a broader look at what we're up against. So one of my big concerns right now is that just when we're getting to a critical point in addressing containing this epidemic, people are really over it. They don't want to stay home anymore. They want to resume their lives as we used to know it, right? And they're also, many of them are on information overload. So we need to figure out how to approach that. Those are two things that are very extremely difficult to overcome, because people, it's, we change slowly. We don't adapt very readily. And so the more we can talk about that this is a new reality for us and that wearing a mask when we go out, not having big parties, you know, keeping six feet away from people that we don't live with, is really going to be our reality, probably for a very long time. So, and also, because this is a new virus, we're learning something new about it every day, and more and more research is coming to us to point us in a direction of how we're going to keep ourselves safe. So these are two big concerns I have. Another one is that we are kind of unique in the state in that we have new people entering our county every day. And they're coming here to enjoy themselves, you know, to stretch out and look at our beautiful ocean and hang out on our beaches and go to our bars and restaurants and our lodging facilities. So some of them are very oblivious to what exactly is going on in Lincoln County. So that's a big concern. How do we address that? And I'm proposing that, first of all, we be kind to people and realize that maybe they don't know what's going on. They're not being obstinate. They really don't know. And that we need to offer them face coverings and just let them know kindly that we are in a pandemic here, and it has affected us in very negative ways. So my third concern is that, as you're probably all aware, our big outbreak that started us off in June really impacted our Latinx community very disproportionately. And so we have had big problems addressing the information that we needed to get out that it could be translated into other languages, specifically into Spanish and into some Guatemalan dialects. That has been very challenging for us. I've hired probably 15 to 20 people that are bilingual that can help us address this problem. And it's not just that we can hire these people, because they don't know anything about public health, right? I've got to also train them in some ways of giving people information. And then we also have to make sure that when it translates it, it's not just word-for-word, but it translates so that people can understand it. So it has to be what we call health literate, so people really understand what we're talking about. So, and also, these, a lot of these people have just been, the inequities are just so glaring. And I've always known that as a public health issue. I know that people that are low-wage workers are disproportionately affected by negative health outcomes. But boy, this virus has really brought that home for me and for many of us. They don't have insurance. They don't have providers. They don't have easy access to healthcare when we do get them in to be seen. There's language barriers there. There's cultural barriers. So it's been extremely challenging for all of us to really help this part of our community. Which leads me to my last concern, which is the community. So public health is here to protect everybody. It's not people with insurance, not people that just have a certain kind of insurance or that speak a certain language. We're here to protect everybody. So that is, that's a big burden, especially when we're finding out more and more that we have a pretty big problem in our community with COVID-19. And one of the ways that we found out about that is not only do we have 324 cases, but a couple of weekends ago, some people from OSU came into the Newport area and did some random sampling of households in Newport to test them to see how prevalent their, the COVID-19 is in our community. And the project was called TRACE, and it stands for something, I don't know what. Anyhow, it's a research project, and they ended up testing, they had about a 70% rate of people willing to be tested. So that's pretty high, because you know, you always get these surveys, right, or people knocking on your door, and the response is pretty much no all the time. So most research projects, if you can get a 30% rate, you're doing pretty good. We got a 70% rate. So, and they did the nasal swab for people, and then they took those back and tested them. And we got a 3.4% positivity rate out of that. Now, for us, what that meant for us in public health and for my CD team, my Communicable Disease Team, is that we had 13 positives out of about 560 tests. And you think, oh, 13. I mean, actually, in the old days, in April, March, April, and May, 13 would have been stunning for us, right? Because we were just creeping along, one here, another one, till we got to 16 on June 1st. But 13 now seems like nothing. It's like a drop in the bucket. So we were pretty pleased with 13. But then when we saw, they did a lot of massaging those numbers and did some modeling with those numbers. And what they really came up with, what that really meant for us, is the 3.4% really equates to 34 out of 1,000 people are infected with COVID. So that, that's a big number. And I think, Doug, you did the math for me. How many people did you say that was, actually in Newport?
Well, roughly about 1,600.
About 1,600 people in the city of Newport are infected with COVID. And we have, we know of 324 right now.
Yeah, I actually extrapolated those figures to be county-wide.
Oh, you did it county-wide. Okay, okay. So it's maybe not quite that high. But because we haven't sampled all of the county, we don't really know that. But thanks for that clarification, Doug. So that's one piece of information I wanted to give you about community. The other one is just that this is a time when we really need to start evolving. And I think I spoke a little bit about that before. But we need to kind of reset that this is our new normal. And we need to evolve to a place where we have masks in our pockets, in our purses, in our backpacks. They're everywhere, so that when we go into settings where we can't keep six feet distance or we're in a public building, we can put that mask on. So that's just going to become very normal activity for us. And then the third part about community is that we still need to stay home when possible. We don't need to, if you don't need to go out, don't go out. And I think the governor was making that point today, and I want to reiterate that point. We also have a campaign going on that we rolled out in the middle of May called Keep Lincoln County Open. It's a strategy that we are sticking to, and I think you have done a great job in your community getting our posters out. I appreciate that. So again, it's the strategies that we have. They're not a lot, but they're the ones that we have right now. And so we need to make sure that we are utilizing them. And like I said earlier, more and more research is coming out that shows that the strategies we have actually work. So staying six feet apart, that's two-arm-length distance. Wearing your face covering, washing your hands, and stop helping us stop the spread of this disease. Then I have a couple of other things that are related to community. One is just to let you know that we have deployed what they call the Rapid Response. It's part of the Workforce Investment Board. Its goal is to try to intervene so that businesses don't go out of business. And so they, they kind of swoop in, and they're going to focus on all of our businesses that are in outbreak mode right now. So they're actually going to those businesses. They're talking with the owners. And they're making sure that the owners know about the resources that are out there for them. And then they also help the employees, like with lost wage kind of things. So that's a wonderful resource for us, and I was just thrilled when I found out about them. And then the last thing that I want you to know about the work that public health and the county has done in relation to COVID-19 is that we have stood up an Essential Needs Coordination Group. We hired Asia Richardson from the school district, and then Alma Baxter from DHS has come over to help. Those people right now are probably our most informed folks about what resources we have, either locally or at the state. And they are helping to coordinate all the different agencies out there in our communities that want to help, that are raising money to help. And we're kind of coordinating them, and so when we get calls into our call center of people needing diapers, or food, or medications, we can activate one of these agencies that can supply those needs for these people that are having to stay home. And you know, I didn't mention that about our Latinx community, but you probably can figure out that if you're a low-wage worker, you're probably working more than one job. So that has complicated our response terribly. But also, they need to work in order to put food on the table and pay their rent. So it's been very challenging. They don't want to give us the contact names, because they feel like the rest of the people in their household need to work so they can pay these bills. So the Essential Needs people are really helping us with that as well and just giving these, making sure that people have the resources they need so they can stay home for their 14 days to stop the spread of COVID. So I'm going to quit there. Like I said, I could talk all night about it. But if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. And yeah, thanks for keeping up the good work.
Thank you, Rebecca. Really nice update. Appreciate that. And I will just clarify numbers from the TRACE project. If you extrapolate out the percentages for the Newport population only, which is where they did their study, that's somewhere between 300 and 400 cases that are undiagnosed at this point. We are having conversations with them about doing additional research in the county. Part of that probably depends on funding availability and that kind of stuff, but we are entering those conversations with them. So with that, I'll go ahead and- Is that someone talking or a dog barking? I couldn't hear. I'll just see if we have questions here. Mayor Anderson, questions?
I don't. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Diana Hinton, questions?
Ashley, I just wanted to show you something. Rebecca talked about our signs, and I just wanted to show you what they look like now. It's hard to see, because the sun was shining, but can you see that? Face covering is required, and we have it also in Spanish. So it flashes between English and Spanish. And then we also have the, I guess you'd call it the hard copy type of signs that are up on either end of towns. So thanks to Diane Kooz for that last idea of getting some permanent temporary signs put up. But, and I also just wanted to say thank you. I know that you all have been working really hard. I've been watching you and trying to catch all your meetings and keep up with your website, and I just really appreciate it. I use your information all the time. Thank you.
Thanks. Judy? Judy?
Nope, you're muted.
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Do you got a scroll over here? Mitch?
I also do not have any questions, but thank you for the information.
Diane?
No questions. Thank you for the information.
Rick?
I just want to, thanks Rebecca. I just want to put on the radar screen the childcare issue in the, in the county. You know, I'm connected with Neighbors for Kids, which is actually closed down right now for a couple of reasons. But we're hoping to open up again in a month or two, and we really, we're not sure how we're going to proceed. And when the schools open up, they're talking about half weeks for, you know, kids going two days a week, which means they're not going to school three days a week, and the parents are going to be at very loose ends on what to do with their, their children. And I hadn't thought about, is there some, I don't know what the county, you know, if there's some coordinated thing that we could all be thinking about on a county level to come up with protocols, or strategies, or something. So I don't really know what I have in mind. I just want to sort of open people's eyes to how serious a problem that's going to be in the fall.
I've been having this...
And I do want to mention that the stores I have been in lately, I've been seeing 90, 95%, 100% compliance with the masks, and, and not a lot of resistance. In fact, I even was in a store where almost everybody was wearing a mask except one couple, and I think they looked a little embarrassed that they were not wearing a mask. So I think the culture is maybe, has shifted on that. So that's, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. I have to say that I too am really worried about childcare, and we have, earlier on in the pandemic, Rachel and I, working together, trying to make sure that the grant resources coming out from the Early Learning Division, that at least providers in Lincoln County had access to those, which some had heard of and some had not. So just trying to make sure that our providers can, you know, even some of them could not be open, that they at least could get that grant money coming in. But now that the school district has released their plans for fall, I think I'm having the same thoughts that you're thinking, and so perhaps you and I could act offline and, and put our heads together and think about, you know, how cities and counties can maybe help or have a conversation with Dr. Gray, and, and try to see, you know, what could be creatively done. But I have very similar concerns as you do, both for the whole community, and for myself with a family of small kids. So let's, let's connect and talk more. Commissioner Hall, questions for Rebecca?
Sorry, you put me on mute. Don't have anything. Great report. Thanks.
Commissioner Hunt, anything for Rebecca?
No, and thank you Katie for doing the math for the Newport area versus the county.
Moving on then, I think our next thing is transferring properties from Lincoln County to the city of Lincoln City. I'm not sure, I don't think Allison is on the call with us. I don't know if that was something Ron, you wanted to...
Hi Ken, I can jump in on that, unless Allison is one of the callers that I don't have a name tied to.
I was seeing Allison.
Riley Hoagland.
Okay.
Oh Riley, I missed you. I'm sorry. Riley, did you have any questions for Rebecca?
I don't. I thank you for the report. No, I just echo the same concerns as the childcare and the two days, the A/B block schedule that looks like. I share the sentiment, but no, thank you very much.
Okay, Ron?
Okay. So over the last little while, our two staffs have been very busy in bringing to you, properties have been transferred, and we got quite a bit of it done, but there's four other properties that we wanted to bring back, that there were some questions, and we just wanted to make sure that, that we still go forward with this, that we have the support of the, both the city and the county. These are four properties that are, two of them are each next to each other. The first, there are two lots in Pacific Rim Estates. They're zoned as R175, .39 acres, and they are residential, they're, the allowable uses is for residential development. On these two properties, they, one of them has a storm water detention basin, which needs to be maintained, and the second has sewer lateral running through it, which makes both of those really not developable pieces of property. The one, because we need to maintain the storm basin, but the other one was because you just, the sewer lateral runs right down the center of it. There's some possible future uses as road connections for 47th, Northeast 47th, which has been identified as a project that the city and the tribe is working. And so several properties went into foreclosure around that. We just want to know if both elected bodies are okay with us proceeding on the transfer of those properties. The second group, and in your, in your packet, there's a map that shows both of those. The second is their Devil Lake Canals, there's two properties, they're 1.11 acres, they're zoned as residential moderate, which allows multifamily residential. However, there's no development potential for these lots, because they, of the, they're canals. And they're part of our canal system that connects into the Devil's Lake. Again, what we're really asking is to go forward. This is one that I had some real big questions about, as far as what does, what is the city taking on, as far, as far as the maintenance of the canals go. Allison has been working on that, all of the questions that we have, staff have had, have been, have been satisfied. So again, we're bringing these before the two bodies to see if you would like us to proceed with these.
Wayne, is there anything you would like to add to that?
Sure, I could address a couple of things. First, I'm going to go in reverse order, though. The canals, actually, last year when we did transfer of a number of properties to the city, we offered the canals to the city, those two canals. So we've already made that offer, and I think Ron, at that point, you had those questions and concerns about it. And so we took those off the list of what we finally transferred to the city. I would note that the one thing that we had discussed in terms of our offer for transfers, anytime we've got any area that's subject to wetlands, that either has wetlands or potential wetlands, there might be potential mitigation value in that, in that transfer. And so we had talked about the, a transfer being contingent on reserving some mitigation rights if those could be developed there. I think we can explore that further, and maybe we can just do a straight transfer of the properties to the city. But we had considered those in the last round. The first two properties were not ones that were placed up initially, and I think Ron, you did a great job describing the limitations on those properties. Although, there is a potential, depending on what you do, especially with the area that's the detention, in terms of your development of 47th Street, that you may not need that for that purpose in the future. So it could be potentially developable. I don't know if you've had that analyzed by your Public Works Department to see whether or not that could occur. You do have some limitations on the other lot that has the sewer extension there, although even again, there are some possibilities of building, especially with new construction standards, depending on what you have there, a smaller dwelling or something on a property like that. So there is at least some potential for development. But I don't think we would have any problem with recommending transfer of those properties to the city also.
Thanks Wayne. And John Waffenschmidt, I think, is also on the phone from our Surveyors Department, who also runs property management. Is there anything that you wanted to add, John?
Mayor councilors and commissioners, good to be with you tonight. I'm your county surveyor, and my office also manages the tax foreclosed property program, which these properties all are within that tax foreclosed property program. That's how we acquire them. And I would agree with Counselor, Council Belmont's depiction of the properties, particularly in Lot 2 of Pacific Rim. It's not unusual for a property to find, to find a property with those type of constraints, and typically what we would do in order to develop that, is we would work with the city to relocate the line to one side of the lot, so that it could be developed. But at present, it would be difficult to develop, and we have no problem with the potential of the county transferring these to the city's jurisdiction.
Thank you, John. I'll just start with the two other commissioners, and I don't think we need a formal motion, because we're not transferring them tonight, we're simply just, you know, directing staff to continue to work on a potential trust, transfer that would be approved later. So I will just check in with Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Hunt to see if we have possible consensus on that. I will say that I have had conversations with the Surveyors Department and with Allison both on these properties, and I think it makes sense to transfer them to the city of Lincoln City. And I think the other two properties that are potential wetland areas, again, those were in the, part of the package we transferred to you last year, were taken out for some concerns at the time, or just needed more information, but we wanted to move forward with the rest of the package. And so if now Lincoln City is ready to rethink about those properties, I'm still in favor of transferring those as well. So Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I, based on all that I have heard, I would like to see a formal document for us to consider brought forward, but so far, I haven't heard anything that makes me believe that we should not proceed.
Commissioner Hunt?
No, I think it makes a lot of sense, so staff, work it out and bring us back a document.
Okay. Mayor Anderson, I'll kind of turn it over to you in terms of how you want to get consensus or have discussion from your group.
Yeah, and again, we're not making any decisions tonight, we're just, you know, still directing staff, and this has been on the table. I guess, you know, I've not seen the answers to some of our questions, but you know, the primary one I have, especially on the Devil's Lake Canals, is why, why is the county needing to transfer it to the city first, and why, why we just don't give it to the adjoining properties? I have no idea what, and concerned about the city holding this. So that, that to me is one of the questions. And then also even on the, the other two properties, you know, it, if, you know, it's nice if the city picks this stuff up, but I'm wondering if that drainage pond isn't the responsibility of an HOA, if that community has an HOA, you know, why, why the city steps in? So those are just kind of questions before we finalize anything, but once answered, you know, whatever seems to be logical, and the best is I'd be for. Wonder, do any councilors, Deanna, or I can see you, anybody have any other questions or comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
You know, Judy? Okay. Diane?
No.
Okay. Rick?
Nothing for me, no.
Riley?
No, nothing for me.
And Mitch?
Nope.
So I guess Chair Jacobson, I, I think the answer is, let's keep it moving and get the questions answered, and see what makes sense.
Do you think that Wayne and Ron and John, do you guys have what you need from us to move forward and continue discussions?
I think so. Can I maybe make one comment? This is part of a process that actually the county's been going through with cities throughout the county, in terms of trying to take care of some of these property issues we have within the cities. And I will say this, I think with Lincoln City, with the exception of one small piece that we had offered to you at the end of Logan Road, at northern end of Logan Road, I think this actually completes the transfers of all the properties that we've been discussing if we complete these. So that's, that's nice to have that done with at least one city.
Great, thank you. And I, just talking about property transfer, I just want to say how nice it is to finally have Logan Road transferred to Lincoln City. You know, I was planning to have a big party, when that finally got transferred, but unfortunately, COVID-19 had other plans, but I'm really glad we were able to all work together, and the staff was able to work together, and we were able to get that done. So thanks to all of you who helped with that process.
Deanna?
May I ask something? I too am very excited about the Logan Road transfer, and thank you also very much. I'm just curious about that one last piece that, that Wayne just mentioned at the end of Logan Road. I know which one that is, and it's not usable, probably for any reason, but I'm just curious, is that just going to stay the way it is in county? I mean, I'm just curious about that piece. Mostly because I get input from neighbors about it, and I just need to know what it is, what it's going to be. Thank you.
Frankly, I think it's going to stay and remain as it is now, at this point, because the county, you know, basic philosophy has not been to vacate any public rights of way that are adjacent to the ocean. It implicates, and I think Richard can probably understand when I say it implicates some planning goals, whenever you vacate anything that provides access along to the ocean, even if it's not physically accessible. So it had, there's a variety of issues that are surrounding that that we'd have to deal with. So it may be that what we do is just leave it as it is right now.
So if I could just follow up with, so then the questions, complaints, issues that we have with that, I should be sending them to the county?
Yeah, we are, we are the current property owner, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And who would that be?
Public Works Director Roy Canyon would actually deal with that right now.
Okay. Thank you, and sorry, Roy.
As far, no problem.
All right. I think with that, we're actually ready to adjourn. Thanks everybody for doing this, and doing this online and remotely. We didn't seem to have any large technical issues, so that's good. And I think I see Dick trying to say something, so go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I wonder if we could, if we have time. Are we under a time issue here?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, okay. So all I wanted to do was, was thank you and the other commissioners, you know, for your contribution to our transitional housing project with Helping Hands. You know, that, that is moving ahead, and hopefully by the end of the year, we may have something to show there. And I was wondering if in your new budget, there was any plans for homeless contributions going forward?
I think a lot of that is up in the air. At this point in time, we are essentially running a hotel voucher program out of a couple of hotels for people that would otherwise be homeless, including those that maybe are COVID positive, not obviously in the same room or area, but also for people that are COVID positive, and also vulnerable people that would otherwise not be there, or not be housed. So while there is some, you know, reimbursement for that process, there is a portion of that that is not reimbursable, so we are essentially eating that at this point in time. Additionally, we have a lot of staff time put into that process right now, that is likely not going to be reimbursable either. And so in some ways, we're actually doing a lot directly, which we don't, haven't done in the past. in the past, but COVID has pushed some of that a little bit. And so, you know, whether or not we're going to make a large contribution to another project or if we have to continue to make a large contribution to what we're doing already, I think is kind of yet to be seen. I think we are having some discussions now about the warming shelter kind of model that typically operates in the winter time and, and if that's really going to work this year, you know, putting everybody together in the same room with COVID, you know, I can see my public health nurses kind of going, no, please don't. So like I said, we are continuing to put people in hotel rooms and it's possible that we have to continue doing that for the foreseeable future. So it's hard to say what direct funding we have for other projects because we're doing that right now, except kind of where I'm thinking, but I will let Commissioner Hall and Hunt weigh in on that answer as well. Commissioner Hall, anything to add?
Chair Jacobson, council members, Commissioner Hunt, you know, I think that the chair's comments accurately reflect the direction we're heading. We definitely want to keep partnering with local municipalities and private nonprofits to help expand the community, the countywide community's capacity to deal with homelessness. And we are looking into a variety of options and how best to accomplish that, I think both short term and long term.
Commissioner Hunt, anything to add?
No, I think that sums it up well.
And Wayne, anything you, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor Anderson.
But I have one, one other, just a, a point of not real contention, but alarming. We may want to relook or look at the process of when the county has properties through foreclosure, that, the disclosure or informing communities prior to the sheriff's sale. We had one situation, which is really kind of unfortunate recently, where property just north of Southeast 23rd Street in Lincoln City was sold at sheriff's sale. And the unfortunate part of it is we've been looking at that area as a urban renewal area, but also the need to realign that whole street onto 101. And, you know, it just would have been helpful had we been aware prior to the sale, I guess. So I'm, I don't know if, if we missed something or there's not a procedure in place.
Question for you, Mayor Anderson. Do you know, is that a, a bank foreclosure? Was that the sheriff's auction or was that a tax foreclosure? Do you know?
You know, I don't. I'm not, I was under the assumption it was a county, but you're right. Either way, it would be a sheriff's sale. I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I might direct John to look into that a little bit. You know, there's kind of two different processes and the sheriff ends up involved in both, but one, so it's just at the very end, like a bank foreclosure, we're not involved in really processing bank foreclosures until that very end of the sheriff's sale. Then the other one through a tax foreclosure, we work with those properties for a really long time and, and offer alternatives and all of that kind of stuff. So those ones were more intimately involved in, I guess, but John can probably look up what type that was. So at least we understood what happened with communication with Lincoln City and then trying to make sure that we create, you know, some process or put you on a list or whatever so that you guys can see, you know, what's coming, if that would be helpful.
That, yeah, we're in. I apologize. It may very well have been a bank foreclosure and sale to the sheriff's sale.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll just ask John to follow up with you and figure it out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anything else anybody wanted to discuss? Okay. Well, I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Just a big thank you to all of you. I know it's a really, really challenging time to be an elected official. I don't think any of us, when we took our oath, signed up for a worldwide pandemic. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for doing what you're doing. I know it's a really challenging time right now to be an elected official at any level. So thank you very much and please feel free to, to reach out if you need information or tools or whatever. So thank you very much and our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.